There's lots of stories. She went through all the interviews and she was like.
Great, here we go, Catherine. I'd like to call to order the September seventeenth regular board meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome. The first item of business is Agenda Item 1.2, Adoption of the Agenda. I would entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
Second. The agenda item has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is Item 2.1, Student Representative Reports. Tonight, for our first meeting this new school year, we are very glad to welcome students from Irondale and Moundsview High School. So if you would join us up at the table right there. We have Konomu from Moundsview High School and Sydney and Aika from Irondale High School. Oh, Irondale's starting out. Thanks and welcome.
So, my name's Sydney.
My name is Aika. And we're seniors at Irondale High School. We're on the exec board for student council. And here are some highlights from our start of the year so far. So, we marched in a lot of community, or a lot of clubs and activities at Irondale, marched in the soccer days parade with other community groups. And yeah.
Our marching band has been really involved in a lot of things these past couple weeks. So, we recently finalized in our Rosemount tournament and we got second place. It was a very close call, so, you know. And we're approaching our September twenty-eighth March of the Knights, which is a really big event, so we're all very excited for that.
And then, a lot of seniors joined us on the turf to celebrate senior sunrise and it was like a great kickoff to the year.
Our fall sports have had a great start to their seasons and our girls volleyball especially has had a number of games that they've won. So, we're all really excited.
And then, this week has been homecoming week. So, we started off the week with some clubs came to decorate their hallways for, just to like get some school spirit started. And then, on Monday, we had the Volley Buff and Powder Puff tournaments where the seniors won and we had a good turnout to that.
On Tuesday, I mean today, we have a lot of sports games happening after school, so we're rooting for our Knights.
And then Wednesday is the homecoming royalty, or the DECA Homecoming Royalty showcase.
Thursday, student council is hosting a Family Feud-style game night show, so the student body is like pretty involved in that and we're hoping to get some school spirit with that.
And then Friday is the homecoming football game with the marching band performing at halftime and the dance team.
And on Saturday, we're finishing off our homecoming week strong with our school dance and the theme is Glow in the Dark.
And that's about it for our school year so far.
Great, well, thanks so much, you guys.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Konomu Gustafson and I'm currently a senior at Moundsview High School. Just to give you a rundown of what's been going down at Moundsview, for student council, we had a get-together event in August where we had a lot of incoming freshmen come and see what student council is all about and learn about all sorts of activities. And we had our Mustang Mentors event, the day where freshmen and all new students come in. And we had a lot of student council activities at the fair where freshmen got to experience what it's like to be involved at Moundsview through sports and clubs like NHS or the Red Cross Blood Drive and many other things. And for our Spirit Week is next week and we recently sent out a form to the entire school to get opinion on what kind of Spirit Days we should do. So, a lot of students really enjoyed Jersey Day or Groufit or Pink Out and we're looking at doing Bring Anything But a Backpack Day, which is pretty fun. And to really increase or ramp up participation in School Spirit Week, we're planning on doing like raffle boxes before school. So, we're having student council members kind of like take pictures of students and post them on social media and we're trying to see if we can get more people involved in Spirit Days. And also, we are doing a new event this year. It's called Movie Night on the Field, which is next Thursday. So, we will actually be airing Spider-Man Homecoming for free to students to encourage people to come out to the Dance and Football Game. And it'll be free for everyone to attend and we'll also have student council members running concessions. And then, we will be having Pep Fest on the twenty-seventh, of course, and we will be having a tailgate committee, which will be planning food trucks like tacos or donuts and photo ops that we will be posting on social media. And then, we will be having another setup on Saturday morning to prepare our murals. Our homecoming theme is Starry Nights. We will be, let me see here, yes, we'll be cleaning up the dance and yeah, that's pretty much it.
Great, thank you so much. We love hearing what's going on at the schools as you welcome all the students back in the community. Thanks so much for taking time out of your night to come and present to us tonight and feel free to leave at any point in time. Don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
You're welcome to stay, but you definitely don't require.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 2.2, Announcements. Shawna, could you please read the gifts for us?
Yes, so there were two gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $600. And there were ten gifts received for the Relfrieder Food Shelf this period for a total of $37,550. It is recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great, thank you Shawna. Upcoming meetings, our next work session of the Moundsview School Board is Thursday, October third at 5:00 PM. And the next regular meeting of the school board is Tuesday, October eighth at 7:00 PM and both are here in the district center. Now I'll turn it over to Superintendent Letts for Item 2.3, the superintendent's report.
Wonderful, thank you. A couple additional updates, student recognition. So, our students already talked a little bit about some of the great things happening. This one is dated just a little bit because the state fair was still going on when I got the information, but we haven't had a meeting since then. So, here's who I want to recognize, the Irondale High School Marching Knights. Because they not only placed first in Class A at the 2024 Minnesota State Fair Parade, they were also named the grand champion, which means that they actually received the highest score out of all forty-two bands who participated at the fair this year. So, to all our staff, students and parents who are part of the marching knights, just thank you for all your hard work and dedication. It is amazing how that all comes together and the wonderful performances, so just want to congratulate them on that outstanding award. And second, I want to let you know that three of our students have been identified as National Merit semifinalists. They are Rahi Kim, Isabella Kunk and Isabel Lee. They join about sixteen thousand students nationally who compete for those highly competitive scholarships as they move forward. Finalists are scheduled to be announced in February, so we want to wish these three scholars well as they continue in that effort and wish them best of luck moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move now to Item 3.0, Approval of the Consent Agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Second.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item on our agenda is 4.1, Certification of the Proposed Tax Levy. I'd like to welcome up Bernice Humnick, Executive Director of Business Services, to explain this certification to us.
Good evening. State law requires boards to certify proposed property taxes by September thirtieth. Estimated proposed taxes total sixty point seven million for all funds. The school board's approval of the maximum levy at this stage is a standard part of the process. The approval of the maximum levy gives districts flexibility to make adjustments as final funding figures are clarified in the next coming months. Proposed levies for school districts carry the option of levying the maximum versus a specific amount due to continuing updates by the Department of Education. Truth and taxation statute requires a hearing to be conducted during a regular school board meeting. The statute also requires that the date and time of the regular school board meeting be notified and announced at the time of the proposed levy is certified. The regular school board meeting at which the truth and taxation hearing will be conducted is December tenth, two thousand twenty-four at 6:00 PM. At this time, I'm asking for approval of the proposed maximum levy to safeguard the district's financial stability and ensure the continuation of all educational programs and student services.
Thanks, any questions for Bernice? Great, I'd entertain a motion that the board certify the proposed taxes as maximum on the levy limitation and certification of the 2024 payable 2025 as presented.
I'm moved.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Bernice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to Item 5.1, District Operational Plan Goal Update. Every year, the district sets district operational plan goals and tonight, we're going to be hearing an update on the goal of Community Resource Centers. So, I'd like to welcome Carl Brown, Director of Community Ed, and Mary Sue Hansen, Director of the Suburban Ramsey Family Collaborative, who's joining us tonight. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have a report on some of the work supporting the district's strategic area of meaningful family and community partnerships. More specifically, the district operational plan goal of exploring the development of a community resource center in our district. We'll be back a number of times this year with updates and reports of the work of this goal, but for tonight, like Eddie said, we have Mary Sue Hansen, Executive Director of the Suburban Ramsey Family Collaborative. It's a group that Moundsview Public Schools has been a part of since the inception of the group way back in nineteen ninety-eight. And Mary Sue will share more information about the collaborative and the resources that are available in our community.
Thank you Carl. Hello, board members, thank you for having me. Again, my name is Mary Sue Hansen, Director of the Suburban Ramsey Family Collaborative. I just want to tell you a little bit about the collaborative and then if you have any questions throughout or at the end, I would welcome any questions. We always say that our collaborative is, one of the mottos is we're stronger and better together and that's what collaboratives are. They're really trying to figure out, you know, what can we do together that we can't do alone? So, the Suburban Ramsey Family Collaborative since nineteen ninety-eight formed from legislation from the Department of Human Services. And our mission is connecting individuals, families and community resources to create relationships which enhance the well-being of our kids cradle to career. So, we serve children, youth and families, pre-birth to twenty-one, who are really struggling with their health, learning, safety and security. We always ask the question, how are the children, as our foundational work? The first action that our Joint Powers Board took in nineteen ninety-eight is a How Are the Children ear-to-the-ground survey. So, we hired Sue Garretts. She used to be a mayor of Falcon Heights and she had a side business and she did some focus groups where she went to laundromats throughout all of Suburban Ramsey County libraries and just asked families, you know, what are your needs and where are the gaps and how does a collaborative kind of attend to those needs? So, our foundational question ever since then has been, how are the children? And that is really our website too, www.howarethechildren.org. And one of the things we do is act as a systems change catalyst. And what that means is if there are emergent issues or gaps in the system for children, youth and families who are underserved, under-supported, marginalized in suburban Ramsey County, we look at how do we change those systems to be better useful, accommodating and responsive to kids and families with those needs? So, that's what systems change is about for us. I also say that our work is complex, adaptive, flexible, responsive. It's really hard when people ask me what I do because I'm like, you know, well, I work with a system of care that involves, you know, libraries and social services and corrections and school districts and community organizations and mental health, social services. And we hold this umbrella of support that really works to respond to the formal and informal needs of kids who are struggling in our communities with their health, learning, safety, security and people already, their eyes glare over and it's just too much. It's, so what I say is, you know, we try to hold families together to do better by them, by working together, supporting them, getting resources in their hands and really kind of working across multiple sectors and across systems to look at better and more efficient and more effective ways to support families. So, I talked about our vision, it's really creating kind of a safety net where children, youth and family's safety, health and learning are a priority for all. And it would be just ideal if no child remains in an at-risk circumstance. We really work strategically with private and public and nonprofit partners to create that strong network of services. And we identify gaps, we mobilize partners to provide formal and informal resources. And we really try to create and enhance critical supports for the schools. Everything we do is school-linked because schools are a pathway to access in suburban Ramsey County. And our collaborative work works with all four school districts in suburban Ramsey, Moundsview, North St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale, Roseville and White Bear Lake schools. We also try to leverage human, financial and in-kind support, so really bringing in people's gifts and talents and capacities to help attend to the gaps and needs in the community. There are ninety children's mental health and family service collaboratives in the state. This was an Arnie Karrosen legislation in nineteen ninety-eight and that's when our collaborative formed. Carl and I were just talking, we both started in nineteen ninety-eight, so I've been doing this work and he's been doing this work for a few years, yeah. And I did talk about how we ground all the work that we do with the question, how are the children? We partner with a lot of family service providers, so we're not a direct service, so it's not like people give out our phone number. That's not what we are. We're behind the scenes, working with providers, with school partners, with the county, with human service agencies to create more family-centered services. And then, we're the coordinators. I feel like I'm constantly coordinating services to say, how do we do better, who should work with each other, how do we connect together to address gaps? And like I said, it's different than St. Paul where they have one collaborative, one family service collaborative, one school district and one city. We have seventeen cities, four school districts, fifty-seven schools. So, our work is a little different because each of the school districts out here are very different and they have different systems. And so, we really try to create strong relationships with all our schools to make sure we're being of use to you all. And so, when we bring in partners, and I've talked to this about the fact that a lot of our gaps have been that we really lack culturally-specific organizations in suburban Ramsey County. So, one of our focuses has been to bring in culturally-specific services from the cities or throughout and bring them to suburban Ramsey, form relationships and bring those providers so we can serve more kids who are underserved. This is a little bit of our funding. We do receive some direct service dollars. They're actually title four A dollars from the federal government, which is foster care dollars and MA dollars that flow to the state and then flow to the collaboratives. Once they become collaborative dollars, they cease to be federal and state funding. So, we do receive, right now, we have about $700,000 we're allocating in direct services and I'll talk about what those are real soon. Our collaborative receives thirty-seven percent of that countywide money. The St. Paul Children's Collaborative receives forty-nine point nine nine percent. And the Ramsey County Children's Mental Health Collaborative receives eleven point six three percent. That's a much smaller amount. And so, our collaborative partners very closely with the Children's Mental Health Collaborative. And we have a memorandum of agreement to grow our mental health system of care together so that they get some of those funds and that balances that disparity. Our overall budget is one point one million dollars. This includes our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four operations. Our admin is about fifteen point eight percent of the overall budget. We keep pretty lean. I'm the director and I have a few co-leads who help me update resource directories and things like that. But I have been really lean these last, these full twenty-six years because I really want to, you know, keep our collaborative partners engaged. And I feel like if we ask too much of them, we might lose their participation. But for the past twenty-six years, all these providers have supported the revenue for the collaborative. That includes Ramsey County, that includes your district, thank you so much, Six Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three, Twenty-Four and Cap-R-W. And they each give a core partner contribution every year. And we'll be asking for your core partner contributions again for this coming year. But here's your return on investment. So, since nineteen ninety-eight, we received four point seven million in core partner contributions from you all. In turn, we received the twenty-four point six million in LCTS funding. We served one hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty children, youth and families so far in suburban Ramsey. We raised another thirty million in added direct services. So, that's a total of fifty-five point four million in leveraged direct services for suburban Ramsey County. So, that's nearly a twelve-fold return on your investment. The kinds of services we have are school-linked collaborative services, there are mental health services with the Children's Mental Health Collaborative. And these are school-based therapeutic supports, no, I'm sorry, these are school-linked therapeutic supports, culturally-specific supports. But we also get funding from DHS and I've worked to get that funding from the Department of Human Services from the very beginning. I think this is our fifth round in multiple-year grants. And those are the school-based therapeutic supports that are in your district and the other districts. The community social worker, community resource navigators are in each of your school districts too. They serve the comprehensive basic needs of children and families who are in at-risk circumstances. We partner with M. Health Fairview with their cultural brokers. We also partner with Marnita's Table. We have in the past, in two thousand seventeen, our board created a partnership with their intentional social interaction model. But this year, we don't have any funds to work with them, which is sad because I know this community engagement work, it really requires a lot of support. And so, it's unfortunate that we don't have those funds. But we also do things like every week since the pandemic hit, I work closely, very closely with a basic needs practitioner team. And we used to meet in person at the Maplewood, the Woodland Hills Church. Once a month, there's about forty basic need practitioners who came. Since the pandemic hit, we've been meeting every week virtually. There are now four hundred and sixty partners who joined this team and about fifty to sixty show up every week. And that team really works on coordinating our responses to help kids and families who are at risk of homelessness and things like that. And this is our heading home basic needs practitioner team. We do whatever it takes to keep families in their homes, their schools, their community. We create from that work that we do every week, we create what's called a basic needs resource directory. It's just a Google Doc, but it has resources on our website. So, if you go to howarethechildren.org and you scroll down on the first page, you'll see that basic needs resource directory. Over three thousand nine hundred viewers work on utilizing that directory very often. And we also have a jobs and training directory too that we update. And this is what the basic needs resource directory looks like. And then, from those weekly meetings, if practitioners are working on a case with a family and it's very, very complex and they've tried everything and the family has tried everything and they hit the wall, I always say you can call me because I have twenty-six years of experience working with all these partners. I can come together with you. We don't name families' names or anything, but we provide support for the practitioners and create a team for them. And I guess what I feel that's doing and what practitioners have told me is it gives practitioners more confidence to work with families who really have lost hope. And when I used to be a social worker many, many years ago, the one thing families always said is, no matter what, I looked in your eyes and I knew that you had ideas and you had hope and that gave me hope. And then I know, because I watched their kids, they look in mom and dad's eyes to say, are we okay? And then, as long as everybody looks like they have a plan and that we're going to get through this, kids are okay. And it's all about how are the children? And so, I'm going to kind of end with just a quick story. I was at a fair many, many years ago before I had a child of my own and I thought, this is a really busy fair. I'm worried that some kids are going to get lost. And I'm kind of intuitive and all of a sudden here was like a four-year-old boy running around crying and just bawling. And I went up to him and I said, honey, honey, are you okay? And he said, I lost my daddy and don't judge me. I said, what does your daddy look like? And I get, this was before I had kids and as if he was going to say, my dad's, you know, six foot two or whatever. But he said, he looks like he loves me. So, I always think about that. Our kids are watching us all the time and the more we can give hope and the more our collaborative can give hope to practitioners, I really feel kids are going to be okay. It's truly as we are better and stronger together. And so, the last thing I just wanted to say is, you know, this system of care that we provided, if you look at all those green numbers, those are all those points of light of people in our communities that work with us in suburban Ramsey County. And I always say it's like we've created a horizon. And I always say it's like we've created a Verizon network and we've created all these cell towers so that people can know who to talk to to help families. Lastly, I just want to thank you all. Your school district offers real comprehensive student family supports. You have for many years studied the complexity of mental health issues and incorporated new learning and processes to address gaps. You have what's called an interdisciplinary team that you support every month with your practitioners in your schools who come together to work with people like us, community partners to address the gaps in your own school district. You understand that collaborative work is relational work and it isn't easy, but you put in the time and I believe it yields exponential results for everyone. And our community is benefit from that commit, the commitment to partnership. So I thank you for our 26 years together and for your support. And I really feel SRFC is strong because of you. So thank you so much.
Great. Yeah. Any questions from the board? We got to hear from Mary Sue on Thursday night at our work session as well. So I think that some of the questions and discussion we had then, but any additional questions or comments? Yeah, Jim.
Yeah, I'll just comment on this. I think a lot of us in government always say we're going to work together and we're going to coordinate and this and that. And what we all know in schools is some of our problems are rather complex and need to be handled, maybe not within the school, but within a larger sphere. And so we have over the years supported and invested this. And as we've seen, our dollars and our services keep growing and growing and growing. And, you know, this is basically about connecting our families with the resources they need.
That's right.
And, you know, it's great. We have a clearinghouse. It's great. We have Mary Sue, who's devoted herself this last 20 years, six years. And I got to tell you, it is a very efficient, cost-effective way to connect family with the resources they need. And I'm really pleased with this. I look forward to many more years together on this because I really think it serves our community and our kids very, very well. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Jim. That was nice. Thank you.
And I just wanted to comment on something that you said that I think is so poignant and that not all families necessarily think about naturally and that we're hoping does come to mind a little bit more, which is schools are the pathway to access. And so, you know, reaching out to the school, if you're a family that is having challenges is, is, is just so important and obviously takes courage. But, you know, the, the school, the school district, the, the staff, you know, we're here to help. And, you know, through your collaboration, everything that you do and all of the other resources, it really is really amazing what we can do as a community to come around these families. So thank you for everything that you do and how hard you work to, to coordinate and collaborate.
Thank you, Alyssa. I think that's the same back to you all, right back at you because you all work very hard. You don't let go of people. You understand your role is to walk with people too. And so together, we really do make a good team. So I thank your district as well.
And I maybe would close by thanking Mary Sue again. But I'm going to piggyback a little bit and just emphasize, because we had a chance for the public to talk about this Thursday at the work session. Some may ask, well, why is, why are schools doing this? Aren't you academics? And the reality is, is that we're not going to be able to solve all these issues as a school. But what we can do is partner. There are experts out there. There are practitioners. And, and if we, we're not the experts. This isn't school because we're the experts. It's school because that's where the families are. That's where the kids are. And when we identify those needs, we can create these partnerships and find ways to remove barriers. So then kids reengage in our classrooms and in fact, learn more. So this is a, is a relationship that is critically important to us. And I just want to thank you, Mary Sue, and all the partners that you work with out there who, who do support us on a, on a daily, monthly, yearly basis. It's just a wonderful opportunity for us. For the public, you're going to hear a lot more about this because we want to make sure that this remains established and is something that our community, our parents, our students, our staff can count on, that these resources will be here into the future and are sustainable. So again, thank you. Thank you to the board for, since how many years? 98?
Yeah.
1998 for supporting this. And that's pretty, pretty amazing. And we want this to continue well into the future.
Me too. Yes.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. At this time, we're going to move on to item five dot two, updates. Jim, do you have an AMSD and legislative update for us?
Oh, yes. AMSD met recently and they celebrated their 50th anniversary. What is AMSD? I always said, well, I got a school board, I wasn't going to talk an acronym. So, uh, because I never knew what people were talking about. But it's the Association of Metropolitan School District, a consortium of the larger school districts in the state that get together and work on issues together and advocate at the state Capitol for those positions. So they celebrated their 50th anniversary. So we ran through a whole lot of great successes and some not so great successes. And that was wonderful. We also had a excellent presentation. And I'll encourage school board members to look at it in their inbox from Morris Leatherman. We, which is a polling research firm and they helped build on our legislative agenda, but just took the mood in the public. It's, is interesting to hear some of the, what the public's interested in, in public schools and some of the challenges we face. And there's a lot of shifting tides out there. But one of the things that was number one that the public's very interested is our last subject, mental health. It was the number one thing in the polling that they thought schools should be dealing with a lot stronger. So, and, you know, from a school board point of view, career, fine arts, civics, those types of things that the public's very interested in us pushing a little harder. We're doing at the Mountain View School District. So that was great. So, uh, and as we continue on, I think, um, next Friday morning at 7:00 AM, the Legislative Committee, which I am on, will meet and we will work on our legislative issues from A to Z at the state Capitol for next January. So that's my report and thank you.
Great. Thanks for representing us there, Jim. Shawna, do you have a report from Northeast Metro 916?
I do. So we met on the first day of school, September 4th. It was a fairly quick meeting. We did review and approve the 916 superintendent's evaluation. It was a favorable evaluation for Superintendent Boe. And then the other kind of big item of business was to approve a joint powers agreement between the city of North St. Paul and the career and tech ed part of 916. The students will building, uh, be building a single family home. So that construction can now get started, which is super exciting because that does include students from the Mountain View School District in that program who will be helping to build that home.
I got to tour one of those homes last summer and it's amazing to see what they do and what those students learn in that process. So that's great.
Cool.
Awesome. Uh, next is item 6.1, school board member reports. Any school board members have any additional tidbits to share tonight?
Yeah, I just have one thing. So I, I had the privilege of attending last Tuesday, the Island Lake PTA family picnic, which was a great welcome back picnic that was put on by the, the PTA there. And it was, it was a great event. I had the opportunity to meet some of our students there, our staff and, and some parents. So it was a great event. I mean, I couldn't believe how many people were there attending. And it was like a three-hour event. It was again, a lot of fun. So I just wanted to give a special shout out to Stephanie Wise, the, the PTA president and her entire team there just did an excellent job putting that event on. And they coordinated and brought in some, some of the other community organizations to, to speak about the different activities that, that students could, could participate in. So it was just really a wonderful event. So that's all I've got.
I know our Irondale student representatives did mention, but Music of the Night, it's a 30-second annual Music of the Night on Saturday, the 28th, starting at 5:00 PM at Irondale High School. If you've never been to a Music of the Night, I highly recommend it. It spans from not only all over the state, but we get bands that come from out of state. This year, Irondale's show is called Composition 24 in Blue, Red and Yellow. And it's fantastic. And when they said it was close, that Irondale got second place, it was two tenths of a point that they missed first place. It was very close, but it's a really great show. So I encourage everyone to come on out.
Great. Well, this is our first meeting since the start of the school year. So I just, thanks to all of our staff across the district who worked tirelessly over the summer and tirelessly in those last days of August and early days of September to open our buildings and welcome back all of our students across the district, teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, cafeteria, staff, bus drivers, everyone who's contributed. So I hope everyone's seeing all those buses out there and, and watching out for all of our students. So if there's nothing else to come before the board, we are adjourned.